This is the annual report of the Pension Advisory Review Committee, which has been in place for some time. I serve on that committee and so does Barbara Oliver, our HR Director, and Don Kent, our Treasurer Task Collector. It would be considered a routine annual report. The recommendations are typical of each of our reports, but this is kind of a watershed event after two years of struggling with pension issues. If you remember back in 2010, there were people talking about pension costs being unsustainable over the long haul, but some people felt that this was just an aberration in time and certainly over the next few years, things would improve. We didn't need to make any changes to the pension system. The Board felt otherwise and we needed to pursue this further and I think wisely established what was known as the PRAK, if you recall that, the Pension Reform Advisory Committee. We brought in a lawyer from up north and we included members of the public. There were three members of the public included in that committee as well as the bargaining unit representative. So it was a collegial effort by a group of people that studied this issue for some time. Although we never had a unanimous agreement on what ought to be done, I think everyone agreed that something needed to be done about the rising cost of pensions. So the Board was then of the mind, we needed to make some kind of a change, but what should that change be and what would be fair? And so then, we essentially hired the consultants. We hired our regular actuary, John Bartel, to tell us about the cost savings from the different levels of change we might make. And we hired a lawyer to talk about what we could do on our own and what we had to negotiate. And then we hired Buck Consultants and their job was to look at, if we made changes, what would still be fair to the retirees so that we didn't go overboard in trying to save such that we would hurt the employees who will retire or would retire in the future? And out of that came some recommendations for change and then the Board took that position. That was in 2011. So from 2011 until just now, we've been through the bargaining process. Of course, that's the process of discussion and compromise, but we reached the goal that we wanted with compromise. We still have the pension reform and last week essentially you cinched down the last part of this, I think. And so it's pretty much all over except for the paperwork before we put this in place. And some of it's already in place, the EPMC part. So one chart I'd just like to put up, you've all seen these numbers before, but I'd just like to emphasize it. That says Pension Reform Savings 10-Year Projection. This is from our actuary. Things could change slightly, but over the next 10 years, this county will save $856 million as a result of the two changes made. One, the employee share, which is now being paid by the employee, they've participated, current employees, and the second tier for future employees where we will save because of that. So $856 billion over 10 years is substantial. There is some price to pay for that. Bargaining units don't just come to the table without something in return for what they've given, but we will deal with that. That's what we're dealing with right now in the budget over the next few years, but we've achieved this long-term savings. The only other, one thing I'd like to mention is this one page from the report. I assume you got the overall part of the report, but the purpose of this, I just want to point out a couple of items. If you look at 1999, for instance, and by the way, the white bar shows essentially how well we're funded. This legend on the left talks about being funded 80%, 100% and so forth. The white bar shows how well we're funded actuarially, which is over a long period of time, and the green bar, which is considered by many to be the one we should be using now because it's based upon the current value of our assets, which are floating out there on the stock market. This shows that in 1999, which is when a bill was passed by the legislature establishing the big increase in pensions at the state level, especially the Highway Patrol going to 3%, CalPERS was announcing that essentially, we were so overfunded, as you can see, we're 150% funded basically at that time, that CalPERS was saying essentially that, gee, the earnings of this system are going to be so significant over the next 20, 30 years that you won't have to pay anymore for these added pension benefits. The assets will carry us through. And so the state bought into that. I think at the time, they were paying $169 million a year in pension costs, which is a little less than we're paying for one year now. They thought that the increases would be paid for by the value of the assets increasing the stock market, but instead of $169 million, their price now is about $4 billion. Their cost for pensions this last year is going up $600 million. That's part of the problem they've got and part of the problem we have on a smaller scale. So in 1999, that happened at the state level. The bargaining units were saying, gee, if you're so well overfunded, we need to share this abundance of funding. And that came to the Board and a policy decision was made, well, maybe we should do that, especially if it's going to be paid for by investment earnings. So that's when we went in 2001 and 2002 to the increased pension benefits. That's just a little bit of background to show you where we were, why we made the decision we made, which seemed right at the time and on the best advice from CalPERS. But we all know what happened after that. The market essentially has fallen apart and if you look at what it takes to pay for pension costs every year, 75% of that payment comes from the earnings on our assets. The county pays some money, the employees pay some money, but the big gorilla is the investment assets. If they lose money, we lose in the system. So we have worked as a Board to try and put a drag chute on this economic engine, which has been in trouble for the last few years. The other point I want to make here at the end is you read in our report that a system generally is considered to be well-funded if it's 80% funded. That's a good thing. For the most part, we are there, but what you need to be sure and look at is the fact that this is only for the miscellaneous plan, as you see at the top, but safety is in the same boat. In 2012, we showed that we're over 80% funded actuarially, but market value is below 80%. And so the worry factor that I have, aside from the good news that I just showed you, is that the CalPERS Board has recently reduced their assumed earnings from 7.75% to 7.5%. And there are those among the actuarial professionals that say it should be reduced even further. That move alone will, in two years from now, jump our cost by at least $20 million. And if you look at the detail in the Park Report, you will see that the thought is, over the last five years, the market has not really kept up with that assumed earnings rate. And so the worry factor there is that as we move forward, unless we can maintain the 7.5%, we will continue to fall behind. And of course, when the market loses money, the money that we give to CalPERS, they come back to us to make up for that loss. And so that's just the way the system works. So that's the worry factor, but look at the plus you've accomplished with these pension changes. And that's the general picture. The recommendations are two, well, there's three, receive and file a report, but one of them is to take a liability management fund. There's $931,000 available there. That's built up over the year and use that to pay down our liability. That's the whole idea of that fund is to help pay down the liability. And the third point there has to do with our annual trans, our tax assumptions. And we have for several years now made a prepayment on some of our actual liability for the year. This year, it's $83.5 million. I think that's around a little over 40% of our total cost. And of course, by doing that, we borrow the money at, we just had our trans issuance and I think it was about 20 basis points. So that's, you know, far less than 1% as opposed to the 7.5% that we pay if we pay just regularly to CalPERS. So that's...
So we get a discount on that early payment?
We do.
3.75%?
Yes, yes, we do.
Then we pay 1% for the money?
That's right. Well less than 1% now.
Less than 1%.
Yes. So going forward, we may end up paying even more as a prepayment. It depends on how much we end up borrowing. We don't want to get out of bounds with that trans limit. So that's a general picture, but if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them. Barbara, I see Barbara back there.
Yeah, we have a couple of comments. Speaker Supervisor Stone?
First of all, Mr. Porser, thank you very much for your comprehensive report. You really make it very clear where we are. It looks like we're about 83% funded and we have about a 17% liability, which in the view of pensions statewide, I think the county perks side has really readjusted itself and I think we're in pretty good shape. Assuming that CalPERS meets their goal, I think it's something like 7.25% return on investment.
7.5%, right.
7.5, it was 17.75. Assume they meet their goals, how would we see the progression of this graph over the next, say, 10 to 20 years? Would we get back to 100%, more than 100%? And how long will it take us to get back to, how long is it going to take us to redeem that 17% deficit?
Well, I would say we're looking at at least 10 years at this point in time because we did take a big stock market loss. They held us back from having to pay the full payment at first, but now it's starting to ramp up. That's part of the reason for the ramp up. I'd say at least 10 years and that's assuming, Mr. Stone, that we get 7.5% every year.
Right.
Because when that drops below, it costs us dearly.
But the reverse is also true. There were some years that CalPERS had greater than 10% return on investment. And while everything seems to be very pessimistic now, we know that what goes down can go up, what goes up can come down. If PERS's portfolio should come back and be greater than 10%, then that would reduce our liabilities in the future and elevate these percentages to maybe less than 10 years. But if everything stayed pretty much the same with the pension reforms that we've enacted quickly, which I think we're probably one of the first counties and municipalities in the state to do it as quickly as we've done it and as comprehensively as we've done it, what you're saying is that we'll see a slow ascension of those bars, if you own the bar graph, approaching 100% within the next 10 years?
I would say so, yes. In fact, you know, some people, I look at it occasionally from a more conservative viewpoint, but with all our competing priorities, it's hard to really hone in on this. I would say anytime you drop below 80%, we should put on our priority list, perhaps adding additional money to keep at 80%. We can't afford that right now, but someday, we might want to put that on our list to hold at the 80% level and make us get back to 100% as soon as possible if we want to go that far.
At what point does it actually get critical for a municipality with their unfunded liabilities? When does it really create a problem where our pensioners are going to get a worried sign from the county that we're not going to be able to...
But yeah, I think the problem is, just like you see in other places, I think Stockton's facing that problem right now is when, you know, the liability falls, but the net, what is the practical impact is that the cost goes up to the local jurisdiction and pretty soon, they start trading off benefits to retirees for service to the public right now. And the more you do that, you run into trouble. And then as you begin to cut service, at some point in time, can you make the mortgage payment? And if you can't make it, then you have serious problems. So what the Board's done here is they've recognized the problem early enough to take action, make some change, and like I said, put the drag chute on that engine that's moving us to a higher cost.
Just a couple of comments. Ed, can you stay up here for a minute? What I think bothers me over this whole discussion is that there were not, CalPERS is kind of If you read their bulletins that they put out, you'd hardly even know that their investments crashed by about 23% or 24% or that this year, they're still suffering at what, a 5%?
Yes.
Loss? I mean, they're not at 7.5% even. They are 12 points away from 7.5%. And repeatedly, we've had outside observers that are independent, that are competent, all the way from Warren Buffett, Stanford researchers, saying that CalPERS is, the expected rate of return is not realistic. And in fact, the figure of 7.5 is a political figure. It's not an economic figure. It is one to shelter communities that are already hard hit by all these extra payments and losing property and sales tax from recession to protect them from paying more cost in their pensions. And so they go through these smoothing routines to blunt the impact of these things over a long period of time. And you can only do that once. I mean, if we have another downturn here, can you imagine what the multiplier affects? The other thing, the other thing I have at CalPERS is the way its board is formed and the way it decides what it's going to do. And it's done some really outrageous things. I mean, the payments to these placement agencies, placement agents, for example, in the tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars certainly calls out for reform, but its own committee structure seems to reinforce their own Pollyanna-ish projections of what they can get in the way rate of return. And the fact that the members, the employees are in place, they're capped, even though they're paying now in the pensions, they're capped at eight or nine cents of a dollar, whereas the public side is not capped. And so there's a feeling now to kind of make up for lost ground, CalPERS may actually engage in even riskier types of investments out there. May pan out, may not, but since the public is holding the bag on the downturn side, we don't get responsible and accurate forecast. And this is what our county needs. So can you, I mean, what credibility after the, after, you know, the 10 years of, you know, you've had more than 10 years of experience, what credibility can we give to these forecasts? And what forecast should we be using? Because this county can ill afford having paying for escalating ongoing increases in our pension costs due to unfunded liabilities and investment returns that will never match 7.5%. So what forecast should we use? Should we use Mr. Bartel's saying, what's he forecasting? Either Stanford researchers, but why should we float along here just reacting to what CalPERS gives us and saying, well, we hope things will get back, they'll come back, it's going to go up and down. And it comes back, well, if it comes back in 15 years, it's too late for a lot of important services, it's too late for a lot of employees that we needed to hire, it's too late, it's too late for everybody. We need some relief for the next five years.
Well, the big issue in making a forecast has to do with what do you think the stock market's going to do? And unlike LA City, where Mayor Viera Gosa has said he doesn't want to reduce the assumed earnings rate for the safety pension system from 8% where it currently is, which is totally unrealistic in order to save budget, you have to look at where you are. Bartel has said to us at meetings that he thinks if we really wanted to be conservative, we should add more money than what CalPERS actually demands because he thinks over the long haul, their earnings are not going to make what it is. But I don't know how good his crystal ball is either. So, and we have a budget to make. The more we pay out in budget costs right now, the less we have in the way of services. So we don't control that economic engine of what's going on with the stock market, but I would say what we should do, what we always try to do, is to look at, what if we were only getting a 6% return or a 7% return, what would it do? We already know that going down one quarter of a point is going to cost us $20 million in a given year. That's a big hit. But what CalPERS does in the situation is to paint a picture, which is not totally realistic. And you used Warren Buffett's name. Warren Buffett is the one who said, it's only when the tide goes out that we see who's been swimming naked. And that's basically the situation. CalPERS is, if they paint a picture that's unrealistic, when it comes back to us, we've got a problem. So we do use different options as far as what those assumptions could be and we'll have John Bartel draw those up and we'll see what that looks like.
You can give us those projections. I know we take a pretty conservative stance with regard to sales tax projections, property tax projections, and that's what we ought to do here with the pension system as well. And you know, the next battleground, and we're going to see it here, there are already lawsuits filed on San Jose and San Diego, is, you know, if these returns don't recover, and it looks like here, the last couple here, they're not recovering to the extent that the CalPERS had hoped, but if they don't recover, the next battleground is going to be on current employees and their pension benefits going forward years. So that's already joined, it's already out there.
But to me, the point is, we've done the best we can in this situation, working with the bargaining units and public and recognizing that situation and doing as much as we can. We just have to hope for a good stock market going forward.
Okay, and your projected savings of $850, $60 million, they should be reduced by our net cost of around $300 million, is that right? So we're saving actually netted out in all our labor agreements and across the entire employee base. I have the figure $550 million over 10 years. Is that correct?
Well, maybe Barbara can speak to that a little more clearly. I know that for the first four years, our costs are going to outrun our savings and that's why we're working on that problem. Over the long haul, that may be an improved number. That's right.
All right. Well, I would like to see those 6% or whatever you feel, independent folks from CalPERS think are the...
We can get that.
...kind of forecast. Supervisor Ashley?
Yes, I'd just like to, you may look at the situation this way, the, as far as where we stand, the glass is, you know, I'm optimistic. If the glass is half full, I'm happy. Well, the glass is 80% full. And fortunately, even though we're going to go down a little bit the next four years in the long haul, because of the pension reform that we've enacted and we've worked out through negotiation with all our employee groups together, unlike what's going on around the state, we're on a good track and we're going to be in a position where we'll be able to pay more and pay that down and get to 100% quicker than most. We have, you know, we're in the game. We're going to make it. What I feel really concerned about is the state of California, which seems to be in total denial right now. They can't even talk. They have a group of four up there that's supposed to come up with a bipartisan pension plan, going up and down, and they can't seem to come up with anything. And that's just, they want to do that, so they want, it won't be part of the Constitution. They can change it each year. And then the idea is getting a constitutional amendment on the ballot, that when they get the 12-point program, Governor Brown's pushing, which doesn't cover everything, but it's a really good start. It would probably, you know, even goes farther in some respects than ours does. That needs to get on the ballot. As I, you know, we're worrying about ourselves here. I think we're taking care of ourselves, but we're dependent a lot on what the state's doing and they're not facing up to this. And we, I want to make this all work. We need pension reform statewide. The system's going to be so weak, it doesn't matter what we put into it. It may not save us. You know, if you've got 100% of nothing, you know, that's nothing. And that's what I'm afraid we're going to end up with, the state doesn't do reform.
Yes.
Thank you. That was a good staff report, good questions.
Barbara, you watched the whole process, the committee process very closely over the past years. What say you about, well, our current status and where do you think we're headed and are we using good projections here, reasonable projections?
Yes, first, I'd like to answer the question that you asked regarding the $650 million. 550 million is miscellaneous, 100 million is safety, and then the 206 million in savings is for Tier Two. So that's where we get the total of $856 million savings over 10 years. And I think that we have gone above and beyond what most agencies have done in looking at these numbers, not accepting CalPERS's calculations in a vacuum, but using an independent actuary who does numerous projections for us and does scenarios and plays them out for us so that we really have a good range of where we're heading. Of course, no one could have predicted 9/11 and there was a mention that we had one dip. Actually, we've had two dips now. We had 9/11 and then we started up the road again and then we had the 2008 housing crisis and that brought us back down again. So we can't predict what's going to happen next or what the Euro is going to do, but at this point, we are using every tool we can find to be as accurate as possible.
Barbara, just ask, just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. You say the savings are about $850 million the first...
Probably 10 years.
Now, that's compounds, that starts to come, particularly the employee share, it's just like a compound interest in our favor. What do you expect the savings will be over the 10 years following that?
We do have that number, but I...
It's going to be over a billion, a billion dollars or more because of the, if you have the employee share, it picks up steam because more new employees and plus, you know, particularly if we're growing, I mean, you see we're going to, we are going to grow, it's going to come down. And at the time, you know, you have a salary increase up in the future, we're going to save the 8% of that or whatever it is, it's just got to be, it's going to be a huge number, probably over a billion dollars the next, the 10 years after that.
Yes, definitely over a billion, closer to 1.6 billion, I believe, but I can't get that number for you, but I don't have it today.
What's going to do is, we're having to fight it out now. At least we've got the train going our way and over time, it's going to be very favorable, I think, we're going to be able to achieve 100% coverage fairly easily once we get by the, I think, this next four or five years.
Thanks. Mr. Bartel, what does he project? Does he project 7 and 7.5%?
No, in terms of...
Rate of return.
Rate of return. He's saying that they are still overstated, that the long-term interest rate should probably be closer to 7.
All right, if that's the case, you're saying that just a quarter percent drop is $20 million bucks extra, so that means $60 million more.
Over time.
Over time.
Yes.
So over the next four or five years, what numbers are we plugging into, what assumptions are we plugging into our budget? I know you don't do that, Mr. Porser. Are you using 7% or are you using...
We've stuck with the 7.5%, but what we do is below the line, we call it, which is not known, but is looking through a glass darkly and considering what possible things could happen. We are calculating out what happens if we go to a 7% return. So we'll have that as a possible hit.
All right, and how often do you update? Because here we get like quarterly results here and they got, it's down 5% this year. They were supposed to be up. So have you revised your numbers?
No, no, I don't think we do that more than once a year when we see what the annual return is. Otherwise, we'd be looking at, well, gee, are we going to have to make further cuts to the budget? We don't want to do that prematurely.
And remember that there's also that smoothing process going on with the CalPERS rate so that over time, when we have a hit like this, it is not hit the very next year. It's spread over 15 years.
They kick the can, they kick the can down the road.
Unfortunately, but we also kick, we also kick down the road the savings that occur when we have a good year. So it balances out.
Well, I hope we're around to see some savings. Mr. Kent, what say you? You do love investments out there. You see what's happening. Does CalPERS, I mean, the state of California, the LEAF Fund, the fund that you oversee, all use very, very kind of conservative principles and logic as you deal with public money. But here you got this other agency over there, this completely different kind of psychology. It seems to me, they seem more on the level of hedge fund operators back there, this CalPERS.
Well, the only other thing that I could add in here is Ed spoke of the exposure to the stock market and Barbara also mentioned this very briefly, the Euro. What I wanted to add to the conversation is it's not just dependent upon the stock market, and that's where I thought my area of expertise might be added to the conversation, that is, interest income. We manage a Treasury's Pool of Investment Fund separate from the state's LEAF program, but a large part of the portfolio is also going to be dependent on the same things that we're investing in, fixed income securities, Treasuries, agencies, corporate bonds and the like. So we also have to factor that into the mix. We're looking at yields at the lowest levels ever in this country in terms of the 10-year U.S. Treasury note. And off of that, other agency securities and corporate bonds are also being priced. One would have thought that with the downgrade in the U.S. government treasury debt last September, August, that yields would have gone in the opposite direction. In fact, they went even lower. So we also have to factor that into the mix, that CalPERS is dealing with that issue, just like we are in the Treasury shop in terms of generating interest income that we're all accustomed to many, many years ago. Once again, the yield on the 10-year Treasury note somewhere around the 1.5% to 1.6% range. So just want you to be aware of that also. It's not just the stock market. In fact, the stock market today is actually positive this year if you were to look at the broadest measure being the S&amp;P 500. Now, it's not up substantially. We're talking the range of 3%, 4%. I haven't checked where we're at today, as well as the Nasdaq, the Dow Jones, but the broadest measure, the S&amp;P 500, is up this year. And I was just going to say also, I do agree with Ed that we're talking about the, you know... And I was just going to say also, I do agree with Ed that we're talking about, you know, in a perfect world, 10 years is absolutely realistic, absolutely.
So, to characterize what CalPERS does, this 7.5, plus 7%, 7, 8% expected return, are they, do they, are they going into risky investments, riskier investments that a public agency should embark under to?
Well, I don't think, I can't answer that question without looking at their current mix of securities. I mean, certainly, they have expertise far beyond what we have at the local government level. They are involved in securities that we by law cannot purchase. I have, it's been a few years, but I did take a field trip and visit to their operations as part of a due diligence trip, and I can tell you, they are highly skilled at what they do. Doesn't mean they can't lose money like anybody else, just like they did. If you were to draw a pie chart and divide up all the mix of securities you're dealing with, once again, everything from exposure to individual securities that we may purchase on our own, also, as I mentioned, Treasuries, agencies, corporate bonds, municipal bonds, so that would be a different pocket. So, now you're talking about equities, now you're talking about fixed income. Of course, they're involved in other things like private equity investments that are outside of the stock market. They're also, let's not forget, they're exposure to the real estate market, very large part of their portfolio that was unmarketable a few years ago and still may be holding assets that are still unmarketable to this day. And also, another component other than cash would be commodities, exposure to the commodities markets. And we've all seen the run-up in oil markets, gold, agricultural commodities, and now we're seeing an absolute softening of those markets due to what's going on in not only our economy, not only Europe, but also the talk about slowdown in China, and that's another contributor to the decline in oil prices. So, it's really a much, much bigger mix that impacts funds the size of CalPERS.
Good, Barbara, I really appreciate the combined approach here the county's taking of getting your expertise from your department, the valuable HR, our budget people, and statewide experts to look at this. And it seems to me that if CalPERS risk were borne not largely by the public taxpayer, but by the employees that are covered, that we would have had much, we would have adequate pensions, but we wouldn't have gotten excessive, in the excessive area of pensions, and we would not be taking the risk that we took with CalPERS where they continued, lost and continue to lose huge sums of money. There needs to be a new motivation there, and how you get that without statewide reform like Supervisor Ashley talking about, I don't know. Has the governor mentioned anything in his proposals that you think is important steps forward, set a better tone for the entire state?
I think so. I can't comment any specifically. I know that the conversation has gone many different directions over the last couple of months. But I would just characterize, getting back to CalPERS, I would characterize it as the Titanic. It's so big and so massive. Any positive returns, obviously, would be welcome, but these returns take quite a long time to gain a head of steam and to offset the losses over the last several years.
Well, thanks for your good stewardship of our accounts and a lot of other accounts in the county. Okay, Ms. Holstrom, you got to comment on this item, Ms. Holstrom?
I'd like to thank the last speaker for some semblance of reality, because when I've been coming down here, you exposed me to three expensive economic consultants who were nothing but soothsayers, and I think they actually will not see 2014 as a positive increase in any gains. I think that when we're dealing with soothsayers, economic soothsayers, and the gamblers on Wall Street, and the self-important unions, we are on dangerous turf. And we're not going to be up with our nose above the water in 10 years, it's going to be taking 20 to 25. This gentleman also mentioned that China is going south now. Yes, and there are good reasons for that. And as China goes, we go. As we go, China goes. It's a very important intricate relationship there, they're owners. We've been listening to a lot of statistics here, a lot of abstract stuff. I think that when we do that exclusively, as we mostly did now, and lose track of what's happening in the larger culture and economy since World War II, we're going in a dizzy space. The people that never went back into the workforce as they came home from Vietnam have disappeared. The people who were injured after World War II also have never recovered and are not integrated. Our unemployment figures are totally wacko because we are not counting those who have given up and who never re-entered. We can talk until our time falls out, but we're not dealing with realities here. Those people who have enjoyed the pensions and retirement systems after World War II can count themselves very lucky. I think we're going to reach a point where we don't, we can't even afford them anymore. We're going backwards, we're not going forward. And I would like us to be very, very cautious in what we do every year from now. And whether we get statistics quarterly or every six months or every year, let's not concentrate on the figures, let's concentrate on what we do with each other, out in the environment. And we've lost so many skills, we've lost all the people when we downsized who knew about manufacturing world. We sent their kids abroad because they learned that labor and manufacturing is cheaper overseas. We've never gotten them back. So, let's be very cautious. Thank you.
Thank you.